For the legislative body for this township. This process is governed by the Ohio Revised Code. The first case. Oh, I'm sorry.
Roll call?
Roll call.
Mr. Chakovsky?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Westfall?
Here.
Mr. Temming?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Mr. Grody, would you please come to the stand, please? Okay, next on the agenda, we need to approve the minutes of the June 17th, 2014 meeting. Does anybody have any additions or corrections? And appearing the chair would take a request to approve the minutes of the June 17th, 2014 meeting as submitted.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
They moved in second, if we approve the minutes, the June 17th, 2014 meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now in motion carried. Next on the agenda is a public address. There's a public address portion of the meeting. If there's anybody out in the audience who would like to address the commission on anything that is not on the agenda, now is the time to do it. Anybody like to do so? And appearing will move on. The next item on the agenda is a final development plan, number 91-2, 11325 Dallas Boulevard, Lot 11, request for an extension of the final development plan. Does staff have?
The only report is that the applicant is requesting an extension on the FDP. The property is located off of Dallas Boulevard and I believe the applicant is here.
Hi, my name is Ron Wrights. I live at 8647 Willow View. I've been a resident of the township for 37 years and I'm representing the owner of this property, Thomas Ratterman, who couldn't be here tonight, but he's asking for an extension of said property.
Okay. Mr. Chaski, do you have any questions, comments?
No.
Mr. Taylor?
Just, this is, I know the, I don't know how many, fifth or so time we've extended it. I mean, is there anything in the works yet?
Yes, he's positive that the, since the economy is improving, and I think there's some building going on right north of this property. I'm not sure what that is, but it might bring more traffic by there, but he's has a renewed interest in maintaining this.
You talking about the, at Hamilton and?
275.
Further?
Yes, a little bit north.
But not the nursing home down?
No.
Okay.
It's where you come off the interstate.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Now, that's really the only question I have. I mean, I'm.
Mr. Grody? No question. Mr. Temming?
No questions.
Okay, I have no questions either. The chair would entertain a motion that we accept a request for a final, for an extension of final development plan for case 91-2, 11325 Dallas Boulevard, Lot 11.
I'll make that motion. In case number 91-2, we grant the request to extend the final development plan. Sure?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we extend the final development plan on case 91.2 at 11325 Dallas Boulevard. We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Chakovsky?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
Aye.
Mr. Temming?
Yes.
Mr. Grody?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Buck.
Next on the agenda is a public hearing. The way a public hearing works is the staff will make a presentation of the request. The applicant may also make a presentation of the request. The meeting is then open for public comment. We ask the comments be three to five minutes with no redundancy, then closed for public input. This is followed by a discussion among the commission members. The zoning commission will make a motion to approve or deny the request. The commission will then have a roll call vote. This decision is sent to the board of trustees. Public hearing is for case ZA2014, 003 Snow's Lake Tavern, 4344 Dry Ridge Road, Cincinnati, Ohio. Zoning a map to a preliminary development plan for a development of a new lakefront restaurant. Does staff have a presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, yes. So the subject property is located on Dry Ridge Road, as you just mentioned. This is the old Snow's Lake Restaurant, and as most of us recall, it was in a horrible, horrible condition for a very, very long time. In fact, it was in such bad condition that it was placed on our demolition list through the Movement Ohio Forward Program. As, as it was placed on the demolition list, the owner of the property was going through a bankruptcy proceedings. The property was sold at auction, I believe, and the new owners, the fearings, purchased it and have made tremendous improvements to the site, you know, addition through elimination, really, by getting rid of this, of the building that was there and eliminating some pretty significant hazards. Also, they've done quite a bit of work to fortify the shore and, and do some grading and site work. What their intention is, is to, is to construct and develop a restaurant and tavern at that, at that site. The property is, well, you can see, just, just sort of, to orient you here, we've got Dry Ridge Road going across the bottom of the screen. To the south of the property is the Yacht Club Development. To the east is Colrain Avenue. This is the Lowe's building. This is Dona Schwaben here, and then to the north is Rayanne, which is single-family residential The applicant proposes to construct the restaurant on the south side of the, of the lake. There would be an entrance on the east side of the property, which would be left in, left out. There'd be an entrance and exit on the west side of the property, which would be right in, right out, on this side of the property. You'll recall that there's a crest of a hill right here, which necessitates the use of that exit and entrance as right in, right out. You know, when we, when we look at preliminary development plans, what we're talking about is the zone change portion of the, of the approval process. So what we're looking at is building location, the use, the density, the intensity, the yard requirements, the area infredge requirements. What we're not looking at, at the preliminary stage, which will be handled at the final development stages, lighting, signage, landscaping, parking, circulation, other design considerations. So in order to, in order for the, for the zoning commission to approve a preliminary development plan and zone change, you have to look at the, its conformance with the comprehensive plan and the land use plan. This property is located in the character area for Pebble Creek Dry Ridge of the township's comprehensive plan, and they talk about this area being the end of, you know, the terminus of non-residential, or that boundary between residential and commercial development. They're very wary, the comprehensive plan is very wary of, of commercial creep into the residential areas, but I, I think that given, this is right at the boundary between what in the comprehensive plan it calls for the commercial and where it calls for residential. I think that the history of this, of use of this property as, as a restaurant lends itself to conformance with the comprehensive plan. So I have found in the staff review that it does conform to the comprehensive plan. The land use plan identifies this parcel as transitional mixed use. It, it calls for residential housing, low intensity office, and related compatible uses. I believe that as I look at this property and the adjacent properties, I believe that the use that's proposed, which is a restaurant, is compatible with the surrounding uses. I think, you know, a locally owned neighborhood restaurant should be considered an asset to the community and amenity to neighborhoods, and I think the way the site is laid out and, and the way that we're handling this as a plan development, rather than just straight B2, as we discussed early on, I think that it provides a buffer to the homes located on Rayanne, and given the size of the parcel, I think it's a relatively low intensity use of the 10 and a half acres. Hamilton County Regional Planning reviewed the, the project and listed 11 recommendations. Other recommendations from agencies are included in the, in the staff report. So as we look at this, at the criteria that need to be satisfied before an approval, you know, without belaboring, you know, going through every single point, I do believe that, that they meet the requirements for approval with a number of conditions, and those conditions are, are listed in your staff reports and, and on the screen. I can go through those. The applicant did not designate the, the required 15% common open space on the property. That works out to be about an acre and a half. So the first condition would be that the applicant show designated common open space and record an easement per section 9.3.7. Second condition I'm recommending is that the number of parking spaces comply with the requirements of the zoning resolution, that a site plan. Third condition is that a site plan be submitted showing compliance with the required wheel stops and continuous curbing. That wasn't quite shown on the preliminary site plan. Fourth, that a sidewalk be installed per 13.4.2. This is a situation where I would not recommend using the payment in lieu of sidewalk because sidewalk comes right up to the site, and this would be an opportunity to continue that sidewalk network. So I'm not recommending payment in lieu of sidewalk, rather the construction of a sidewalk. When the landscaping plan is, is submitted, you know, streetscape, the streetscape buffer width, hard to say, tree species and landscaping shall all apply, shall all comply with section 14.5.1 of the zoning resolution. The sixth condition that I'm recommending is that landscape islands be installed in compliance with the resolution. I didn't see all the landscaping islands that are required. Any signage that is planned needs to comply with Article 15 of the zoning resolution, and, and then we see on the site plan, we have, it's hard to see on the screen, but you all have bigger copies in front of you. We see an entrance here, and then there's parking. This is the building. There's parking just to the east of the building, and then there isn't much room there, but I, I would like to see some sort of visual treatment, some sort of landscaping treatment between the parking lot and, and the lake. So aside from, from those eight conditions, I, my recommendation is to approve.
Does the applicant have a presentation?
I've been working with Jeff and trying to get everything worked out, and I'm agreeable with all that. Some of the stuff was just not finalized on a plan, because I'm here and I know. The trees in between the lake and the park, not an issue. The only, the only question I would have is about the park in the south way, saying they want me to cut it, you want me to cut it down, or do you want me to put the island or both?
I don't think cut it down. I think just installing the islands is something that's required by the zoning resolution, and I'm gonna have to look, because I didn't look at the parking plan per se, because it's not the final development plan yet, but when you do put together your final development plan, it, it prescribes for a, for a restaurant use. I think it's 15 spaces per thousand square feet of building.
15 continuous spaces, I had to have an island, right?
That's right. And the total parking number is 15 spaces per thousand square feet of building. And you can deviate from that, you know, plus or minus 10%. We can work through that.
Okay.
Yeah, no problem.
All right.
I think you're close.
Okay. My only other concern was the 15% of the green space, if that could be, the 15%ers all in one spot, be spread out a bit. If I give like a buffer down Donna Schwaben side, a part of that, and then across the back.
I think it would make a lot of sense to see it buffering the, the rear, the north part of the, of the property, because that's the, that's the residential area. Coming down Donna Schwaben, that, that could work too.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chakovsky, do you have any questions?
Yep.
It's just a driveway going to the back section.
Yeah.
And then you've got the street right across from it, so it's a right in, right out. But how does Donna Schwaben's driveway kind of play with it, you know, it's getting so close? How's that?
Yeah, we, Regional Planning brought that up also, and the only way, you know, what Regional Planning suggested was to obtain an easement and just use the same, use the same access, but, but I, given that it's only a right in, right out, I didn't see a whole lot of, of problems with the way that they, that they proposed it.
Okay.
Right. Oktoberfest weekend might be an issue. Sure. We want to make sure that there's a. I can appreciate that.
What's your, what's your construction timeframe? When do you hope to get started, and how long do you expect construction to last?
It started as soon as I get through all this. I mean, we're, we're actually behind now. I didn't realize it was gonna take this long to get everything that we needed.
How long do you think it'll take from start to?
Uh, depend on weather, you know? If I get into September or October before I start, it depends on the winter weather, but we would like to see it open by, you know, a little later than July 15.
What, what have you done, been, been a few, couple weeks, first at least, that I've driven by there? What, what have you done so far to kind of clean them up?
Really re-burman everything. I've been working with Hamilton County, a fellow, Dan Taphorn from Hamilton County, he has been out, because we're trying to preserve the lake and the fish and everything in it. We're not gonna do, you know, it's not gonna be a pay lake anymore.
Right.
But I still want to keep the fish and stuff in the lake, so we're re-burman. Yeah, it was in bad shape, the overflow. The engineer that's going with all of this is also engineering a new overflow for it, is this runoff water, will, the parking area, will, the lake will be a retention base for that. So if you've been by, you can see where we've been re, relining the hole, I guess it would be the east side of the lake, with concrete and stuff, where that'll get covered up, dirt, but we're trying to build that up so it's not an issue down the road. We're actually fattening that up about 15, 20 feet thick, so it's not an issue down the road for the buildings next door, and maintain the lake a little.
Good. I'd like to, I'd like to see it all from the fruition.
Timmy?
Not so fast. Jeff, can you get that up on the?
Oh, no, I don't think, I didn't put this presentation together.
I just, I have a question about the parking that's gonna be on the east side of the building, and it looks like you're gonna extend the parking lot out over what is currently a lake, or you're gonna eliminate part of the lake?
That, that part of the lake has been filled in.
Okay, all right, great. I was just gonna say, that's gonna be a heck of a.
Yeah, that's filled in, and I pulled the permits with Hamilton County for that.
Yeah, I, I would not park my car.
Car wash.
I had a question for Mr. Mills, and that is, I saw that Regional Planning had 11 conditions that they were insisting on, and you only have eight.
That's right.
And so they are not what I would refer to as congruent. So which of the three of the 11 that, that you have eliminated from your request?
Sure. So number five of the Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission's recommendation was that the site be restricted to one access drive off of Dry Ridge Road, and that its location follow a separation of 50 feet from existing intersections.
I got that.
Yep, so that one, and this, this was sent to the Hamilton County Engineers' Office for review also. Dry Ridge Road is a county road. Ultimately, the Hamilton County Engineers would approve or disapprove of a curb cut, and the Hamilton County Engineers did review it, and they did not see a problem with that westernmost entrance. So I eliminated that recommendation.
And that was number what?
That was number five.
Okay, right.
Yep, and then number eight was a 30-foot buffer shall be installed on, along the portion of the western, along the portion of the western property line adjacent to areas of improvement in accordance with requirements of, basically, they were calling for a buffer on the west, on the west side of this site.
But I don't think they wanted that, the entire length from the, from Dry Ridge Road all the way down to, into the lake, or?
Their concern was that this property here would develop residentially as it's zoned, and that there wouldn't be enough of a buffer between future, potential future residential development on this property and, and the commercial development here.
Okay, well, I guess my question is, if we require the buffer, what's it gonna do to the parking?
That's the trouble.
Because I see some parking on the west side of the property line.
A 30-foot?
I don't, I don't think you're gonna fit there if the buffer, we require the buffer.
That's exactly the issue, and that's why I'm not recommending it. So it would have to, we'd have to scoot the whole building over and to get the parking, the parking field the size that you require.
Okay, on the drawing that we've been presented, though?
Yep.
Closer towards the street, I'd say between Dry Ridge Road and back, almost.
Halfway.
Building.
Sure.
There seems to be a buffer there.
Yes.
How wide is that buffer? I can't, I can't determine the scale.
Sure.
If you don't know, it's okay.
I can, yeah, let me, let me take a look here.
It looks to be more than 20 feet. I'm not sure it's 30.
Up towards the road it is, but along those parking spots to the east, to the west of the building, we're down to about five feet.
Right, but the way you've got it drawn here, that buffer would be west of the entrance, do you want?
Right, right. Well, they require a 30-foot radius, the county did, on the entrance. I'm 30 feet away with the entrance.
All right.
That radius of my drive there is 30 foot.
That's fair. All right. I got my answer. Thanks. Okay, and what was the third item that you deleted from the county?
Third one was, I even brought my scale tonight, because I knew that there was gonna be a question.
All right.
The final one was, hold on, sidewalks, the number two, the photometric plan. Yeah, you know what, and, and that just seemed redundant, because of course, the photometric plan would be in accordance with the final development. Those are the three.
Okay, I have a question, and that is, if you put the entrance on the southwest corner, where we've been talking about, I know there's a crest in the hill there.
Yes.
So what kind of a sightline problem is gonna create traffic, particularly traffic, you know, that's coming, because I think westbound should still be more of a hill towards that end.
That was exactly the issue. I, I didn't, I didn't want to make it so that the only way in and out was, because it would make sense, because it would line up with Voyager really nice. So if, if this was a flat piece of property, boy, that would be perfect if it just had, you had a T-intersection right here, and you could access the whole site through one entrance, there would not need to be two curb cuts, but because, because this, of the hill, like, that you just said, Mr. Temming, it does not make sense to have the full access to the site on the southwest corner there.
Well, I'm just, my only concern is safety.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, if an entrance exits it, I don't care. Then the only question I have is, if Regional Planning's suggesting an easement or a common drive, by standard, I don't see how that could happen and still have a 30-foot buffer as is proposed in the plan.
They're sort of mutually exclusive. Yeah, right.
If any, right. So that make me smarter than Regional Planning?
No comment.
Okay, all right. I thought I saw on the plan 115 parking spaces, the 15 per thousand square feet on the building, and a 6,000 square foot building would give us 90 spaces. So that 15 is the minimum requirement? We can exceed it.
So the 15, the way our, the zoning resolution reads is 15 is, 15 per thousand is the target, and then it says that you can vary by 10% with administrative discretion, and then you can vary by up to 50% with, with other discretion, with you guys saying it's okay.
And is that the 115, that's like a target, or that's, that's gonna be the reality?
That's what I would like to have. I'd like to put, you know, I'm trying to do a nice parking lot. You've seen these other places where they're parking gravel and all that.
Yeah, I just have to tell you, I'm familiar with that site, and when I saw 115 parking spaces, I don't know how in the world he's gonna fit 115 parking spaces.
They're, they're on there.
Okay, all right. And then, Mr. Mills, you made a comment about designated common open space. I missed it. Have you covered?
Sure, so for plan development, a portion, depending on what type of plan development district it is, if it's a plan development business district, one of the requirements is the owner has to dedicate 15% of the property as common open space, and that has to actually be recorded on an easement. So basically, it's undevelopable to the future. You know, I've, I've been thinking a lot about, because this has come up a number of times in the past, and I've been thinking a lot about the intent of that requirement, and how to, how to make that, get the biggest bang for that, for that buck, if you, so to speak. So in this instance, and it's very site-specific, so in this instance, I think that the best place for that common open space would be to use it to preserve a buffer against the residential property to the north. That would be my recommendation, you know? If we were looking at a regional trail system, that might be something, an interesting, you know, a north-south sort of path along, if, in the future. Right, but we're not, so.
The common open space just means never developable.
Right.
Okay.
So I'm not suggesting that the applicant do this, but out of curiosity, could he designate a lake as the common open space?
I don't know if that would be, I don't know if that would line up with the spirit and intent of the zoning.
Right, but when the final development plan comes in, that's gonna require that he has he?
Yes.
He described the common open space.
That's right.
Of course, it could be more than 15, right?
Sure.
When you were up here a month or so ago, didn't you tell us that, that the, the north part of your lot's kind of like unusable, you know?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I hate to take it just straight across the back, because the back's only 300 feet wide.
Sure.
So at, at an acre and a half, that comes out to like 220 feet, all the way forward across the back that I'm losing. If I could take, you know, 100 feet across the back, or whatever, or 120, and, and come up the side where Donna Schwaben is there, maybe up to the drive, I can get way more than that, you know, and not totally wipe out everything that I have in the back. And it is real rough back there. Chances are, I'll never do anything with it, but I hate to cut 220 feet off the back.
Well, but maybe this is a better question when you come in from the final development plan, but what difference does it make? Meaning, is the intention to develop a part, a part, you know, it's north of the lake? Because, I remember, we had that discussion last year, and like, everybody agreed that.
Right, right.
It's undevelopable, unusable unless you drain the lake, fill it in.
Right.
Okay.
And I bought 10 and a half acres and just throw an acre and a half away where it could be used, you know?
All right, that's all the questions I have. I think, I think it's a good plan, and, and I don't, you know, I see some people out in the gallery that might feel differently. You know, I, I always try and look the, look at these things in a vacuum, not in comparison to what used to be there.
Right.
Okay, if you're just gonna tear it down, I love what, yeah, everybody in the. You know, just looking at the plan. Like, that's all I have.
Mr. Grody?
First of all, comment, Mr. Ferring, just a compliment to you and your family for what you have been doing to improve the site itself.
Thank you.
But I go by it two or three times a day, because I live in that area, and it's being done very professionally, and also you're very sensitive to the conditions of Dry Ridge Road, keeping it clean and so on and so forth, with bringing trucks in to haul in dirt, riprap, and so forth. So compliments to you and.
Thank you.
And your workers and so forth for doing that. The one question I have is, I think when you were here last time, you had said that at, there, you were going to offer music bands and so forth?
Inside the building.
That's what I wanted to know.
I mean, there may be a time in the summer or something, you know, where maybe a guy playing acoustical guitar or something like that, I'm not gonna have any rock bands or anything like that out on the back patio, or nothing like that.
Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify. And then a question from Mr. Mills. The requested zoning of PDB, is that appropriate for this particular project? And secondly, will that zoning enable you then to work on some of the other areas around there that are currently zoned as residential, that are now business?
That was an issue that I looked at initially, and I think that we had a conversation a long time ago about which direction to go in. Should we do B2 on this property, and then, you know, as we're looking at this property, also rezone the properties that are adjacent to it, that are currently zoned R2, but have business uses? I think what the board decided was, let's go the plan development route. I think that we do have to figure out what to do about the Lowe's parcel, and, because it's zoned R2, but it's actually a business use, which really ties my hands if there ever, if we ever have an issue with enforcement, because what do I apply there? The R2 standards, that doesn't make any sense. So to answer your question, yes, we need to, we need to look. So to answer your question, yes, we need to, we need to look at rezoning adjacent parcels to B two.
You have no other question?
Couple, couple more. Where's, are there's the CBs in the, on the lot? Catch basin?
Yeah.
Where, where, where are we managing the water?
All these are tied.
Correct. They're tied together. One's coming in this little area.
They all come to the lake. Down here at that drive, that driveway possibly. Alley.
Okay. So most of the water's going into the CBs.
Catch basin.
Right. Went into the lake.
The original of the.
Correct. Yeah, I can see they're all connected. Didn't see that they were going, and then this one's just going into this little creek. And where does the creek bring out to?
Actually, that's the same creek starts up here in.
Catch basin.
Their retention base don't send it.
The dry, the retention. And then what's the outbuilding?
Wanted to. I gotta come back for everything.
Well, the only suggestion is that they've been talking about the buffer zone on that side. Putting a building there, you might wanna consider putting it inside of your property or however that works out when they come back next time.
Yeah, for accessory uses.
Not in that.
Well, it's right up, yeah, it's right up against it. And if you want to put a.
There's some trees actually here that we're trying to save. Trying to hide it back.
Just making a suggestion, when you come back next time, we might have a discussion about the outbuilding and what it's gonna look like and what it's gonna serve and where it's gonna sit on the, on the site. That's it.
Everybody done? Okay, now, excuse me. Now it's time for the public comment portion of this and the chair would entertain a motion to open the public comment. There a second? We move in second that we open the public comment portion of this. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now for the, this public comment, they should be three to five minutes with no redundancy if possible. Is, is there a list out there? As you can see, we're real coordinated around here. Okay. Since, since nobody signed in, is there anybody who would like to make a public comment? If you do, please come to the podium, state your name and address and take your five minutes.
My name is Bob Desher and I'm president of the Donashwaben Society. And I had two questions, one of which I believe you've already answered and resolved and that is the westbound entrance being right in and right out only, because our driveway's right there. The second part is, you discussed it, but I don't really understand the acreage involved in the green space. We as Donashwaben, quite honestly, would like to have a tree line going down our property that is parallel to Mr. Ferring's. I know he doesn't want to give up all of his green space on the back. So maybe we can come up with a solution that we get some of the green space going down our property line and then also take some from the back to protect Rehan also. So that's.
Sounds to me like that's what Mr. Ferring would like to do.
Yep.
So I mean, if that's what he wants to do, we're, you know, like everybody said, what's been done so far is a hundred percent better than what it was. So it's only uphill from here. But that, that is our only concerns.
May Mr. Mills is knowing it and I'm sure it will come up. Would anybody else like to address this commission? Senator Perry and the chair would entertain a motion to close the public comment part of the hearing.
I'll make that move.
Second? We move in second that we close the public comment portion of this. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Senator Perry, motion carried. Next is the zoning commission will have a discussion about this. Mr. Trukowski, would you have anything you'd like to say?
Good morning, sir.
Mr. Taylor?
No, I think it's a good plan.
Mr. Grody?
No.
Mr. Tammy? Do you have anything you'd like to say? Oh, please don't.
No, just if we pass this tonight, and I think we will, I'm just looking forward to. That's.
The only comments I have is that I think it's a great plan and I'm going to enjoy watching it come about and good luck. The chair would now entertain a motion to accept case number Z A two oh one four dash oh three, Snow's Lake Tavern.
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we accept the proposed zoning change from R three to B D B.
B.
Or Z A two oh one.
P D B.
E D dash B.
Okay.
For case Z A two oh one four dash oh three, Snow's Lake Tavern, forty-three, forty-four, Dry Ridge Road. And that it is contingent upon the eight items that were listed as items that needed to be completed in the final development plan.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved in second that we accept, we pass case number Z A two oh one four dash oh three, Snow Lake Tavern, forty-three, forty-four, Dry Ridge Road. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Trukowski?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Grody?
Yes.
Mr. Teming?
Yes.
Mr. Westphal?
Aye. Motion carried. Go for it.
I do have a question. Are you, are you gonna plan on using the name Snow's Lake Tavern? Are you, I'm just curious, you're gonna keep the name?
Next on a agenda is informal concept review. We have none of those, none of that. Next on the agenda is old business. I have something. As we were looking at Snow's Lake, we were going, we went farther down Dry Ridge Road to, was that the roadside? Roadside Tavern? Roadside? The guys that were in here for the parking lot. Okay, well, we went by there, the highway house and as I recall, when they were in here, we told them they couldn't put parking lot down on the bottom.
Is this on Dry Ridge Road?
No, it's on Old Corrine.
Ah, thank you. Oh, I know where we're talking about. Yep.
I'm sorry, I get, I'm confused.
Sorry. You're about to blow my mind. I did not know that was there.
Yes. I think, I believe that we told them they couldn't do that and when we went by there, it's been paved all the way down there.
The parking lot?
Yes. It goes down a dip and down into the parking lot.
Yep.
Hey, I said, I don't think you were here.
I'll look it up.
Okay.
Yep.
There any new business?
You need to get out into that end of the township.
That's right.
Oh, I've been out there. I've been out there. I just had my mind on Dry Ridge. I said, out there. Okay.
Administration.
None.
I have received a couple of complaints. As you well know, I live in Northbrook. I've received a couple of complaints that the grass down there somewhere, but it's this high in yards and they were on the list and nothing's being done for them.
Yeah. Okay, so that would have been on the list for the trustees last week, last Tuesday.
Probably.
Yep. So we have to wait one week and then we can start mowing them. So I would say tomorrow, our crews are gonna be out mowing the fifty-one.
It's like on Laurel Linda and some of those streets out there.
Yeah, Deschler.
What else? Deschler?
You know, I do have one piece. Sure, sure. Yep. Yeah, they'll be out at the end of this week. Starting to work on the fifty-one properties that are on, that were on the nuisance abatement resolution this month. Now, I wanted to share with you guys, you're aware and familiar probably of the, with the Moving Ohio Forward demolition program that the township was involved with in Northbrook, which is what made me think about this. There's a street called Wheatfield.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. On Wheatfield, there was a, it's two eight eight four Wheatfield, there was a property that was demolished. And I don't think that we spend enough time celebrating wins, so here's a win that we can celebrate. Recently, a developer purchased that property after we demolished it. They paid for the cost of the demolition to the township. We've been reimbursed now and have, have actually today, just today, I approved a zoning certificate for a new single-family residence on that property. So I mean, that's, that's incredible. That, that's exactly the way that program is supposed to work and, and I'm, I'm really proud of all the folks that were involved in, in the Moving Ohio Forward program. That's what is, is supposed to happen and I'm so excited that it actually did.
Cool.
Yep.